Thank you. And before we continue, I don't want to forget that we have a simultaneous translation. If they need assistance in translation, you can call the specialist. The person who will provide a device for them to translate will be there at the back. So if anyone needs a device, we will go ahead and start. Okay, so I think we're ready to go. And with that, we'll continue. And at this time, I know we're going to have our specialist Alberto Ramos Hernandez, who is visiting us here after being deployed, but he's not here yet. But in lieu of that, I will ask Mr. Horton to lead us in the pledge as a former service company. Close session announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council made a close session. We received direction, but no reportable actions were taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylenda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to public comments and public appearances. Not to exceed three minutes. This is a time for the public to address the city council on the special agenda items only. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group comments may be requested to limit their group comments to fifteen minutes. The city council is prohibited by its law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Mr. Jun Kim.
Thank you.
A short. We always government has to have keeping all the series or governments running with transparency. I hesitate to see another issues. First of all, the, I don't know why this agenda number five is there. Because city council, past city council, they posted, they tabled this agenda. And somebody keep putting in. And somebody said Mr. Garcia was the one who's put in because the mayor, but the mayor doesn't cannot override the other fellow councils decisions. Mayor, yes, put the agenda, but in case of that they have some judgment or they have some vote from the council, has to be follow the council vote. Same things like the water, the same happens. So somebody was saying the prior council was decided to approve it, but they're gone. The new comes in, they have they have own, so they cannot blame someone who did it. The they decided, but if you council, the new council, they say there's nothing, something wrong, they can always change it. But I looks like somebody running the show and council just follows. And also this, the the agendas or backup documents always missing a lot. For example, three pages of our year budget, that's ridiculous. At least a minimum of about twenty pages is going to be needed to bring the reasonable pass through. And they they used to make the big booklet. And you guys not doing it. And even today, item number five, Hearthstone, the backup documents, you guys making the the new documents, new the bonds, the bonds supposedly two separate bonds, which is for the for the service and for the for the facilities. But they were put together. There is no no bond is showing the service one, but they put it into the facility ones. They supposedly different, separate. When we see it, we will, you was always had the same separate, everyone. I don't know why you guys put it into one, you knew the one. Why put it together? Or try to hiding or sneaky to the pass through ever together? That's the service for the service, they supposed to be separate the bond. Please, you guys have to look into that and please consider for the future too, that you have to have transparency. You cannot fail. Or you guys making own decision without the law? Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. No more public comments? Before we continue, I will repeat, if anyone has a translation simultaneous.
I put it under the item when the doc comes up.
Yeah, it's on the discussion action. De nuevo, repito, si alguien llegó y necesita traducción simultánea, tenemos la opción. Si necesitan un dispositivo para que puedan, este, escuchar la traducción y participar, la señorita ahí atrás le puede proveer un dispositivo para para su asistencia. Ah, y yo sé que ya hicimos la el puramente la bandera, which is at the pledge is done. But I just want to recognize that, you know, our specialist Luis Alberto Ramos Hernandez is here with us. I just wanted to acknowledge his presence. I know he's visiting us after his deployment overseas and now it's back, you know, with visiting his mom, you know, so thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you, Ben, also, and if we have any other veterans here in the audience, also thank you for your service, so appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we'll continue for the approval of the consent agenda.
So.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We'll comment. We do have an item. We do on the concern, on item number two, we do have a correction to that. Do you have the exact?
I don't have the corrections.
So we're okay? So there's a correction?
There is a correction. I don't have that in front of me from.
Twenty, so on the first line, second line, from twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, instead of twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay. Correction noted.
Correct, and that'll be part of the motion to make that correction.
So just amend the motion. We'll make the motion just to that correction.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and including the correction on the.
Who's second?
Who's second?
Welcome.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylenda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to discussion of potential action items. Number five, approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four of the city council of the city of Callexico, California, determining in leaving the special tax in community facility district number twenty zero zero five dash one Hearthstone. I know we went through this, we had a town hall. I don't know if there's additional information from staff that, you know, has come up or?
Just this morning, again, we received more bank statements from USA Bank. Yes, one second, I have to update a report.
Good evening, council. As we had mentioned during the town hall, that we would be gathering more information, historical information regarding the Hearthstone. This morning, we did receive all the trustee history on all the annual bank statements from the trustee, and we pulled our storage information as well. So now we are ready to start reconciling all the banks, I mean, all the accounts for Hearthstone, so that we can republish more information to bring. And as I stated on the staff report, tentatively, we have, I mean, it could be sooner, but we are requesting, since we are, the finance department is also closing the year end, I'm asking to tentatively have October to have all more information to you. If we gather it before, we'll notify and have another town hall sooner. But at this time, as you've heard, we've been short-staffed, so I do request as at least until October to to bring more information.
And in the meantime, I'm going to still be reaching out to the governing board of Hearthstone, the members that have reached out to me to keep that communication going with whatever information we gathered, whatever remaining information that we can put together so we can get something more of a packet together so we can move forward with it.
And it does help. I had a gentleman, one of the community members, he reached out to me and he gave me a date of one of the meetings, so it makes it easier for us to be able to look for more information.
Thank you. Any comments from the council members?
Yes, Mayor. So since, thank you, thank you for that, just one second, I'm sorry. So since the last meeting, I've been, I did some research here on Proposition two eighteen. And November fifth, nineteen ninety-six, California voted on that day, and it's called the Right to Vote on Taxes Act. Proposition eighteen was a constitutional follow-up from Proposition thirteen. And it allows local voters the right to use the initiative power to reduce and repeal any local tax assessment fee or charge. So if I may, I'm just going to run to it. I would like to make a motion, I wrote it here, I'm going to read it out. I make a motion to repeal temporarily, repeal the special services tax, but keep the CFD, however, with until a full forensic financial audit reveals whether the services guaranteed under the special services tax have been ever been delivered, delivered. And if so, the special services tax must be then eliminated in good faith. And here's the thing, it should be noted, if this motion passes, the city's credit rating will not be affected. That's my motion.
Any other comments? Do you want to entertain us, someone wants to entertain a second motion onto that? Mr. Moreno, so want to make a comment?
So the motion can hold while we comment on it, right? It doesn't die?
If that's how you want to treat it.
Okay. Per what council member Moreno said, what is attorney's advice on it? It is two separate taxes.
Correct, on the the second one, staff can maybe comment on how that impacts her budget on the levy itself, that you do have an obligation to pass that portion to, because you do have bonds that have been issued, and that's part of that, and also that part will impact for sure, the can impact your ability to bond in the future.
But the special tax portion.
The the second.
The second, the special tax levy, the one with no sunset.
On the services, it might impact the budget, your city's budget.
Yes.
Correct. So it's two different parts of it, but I can't speak to that portion, but I think that would probably impact your budget. And you probably, I would, but that's more of a finance, but most of the.
Yeah, so that there goes, yeah, if finance could come up here, so the CFD part of the motion is to pay the bond, correct? That's part of your motion? Okay. And then the second part is to absorb what the special tax is. Could you talk about what the impact on the budget would be?
Well, I'm not an expert on that.
Right.
But as the attorney said on the town hall, he did mention that we could, the council didn't have that authority to to take away the service during his meeting, during the town hall, that it would take for the sunset or something he mentioned.
The way I understand it is that the services, it has no sunset, but you can put a moratorium on it, correct, Carlos? If the city sees fit, but there is an impact on the budget, but not an impact on the ability to bond, so our bond rating, correct?
The levy assessment, it's two parts, it's just two, it's two, it's two different items. The second part will impact, I think, I mean, I'm not, I don't know.
We don't know how much it is for the services.
I'm assuming it would impact your budget.
So it'd still be levied, but for the CFDs, not actually the services, correct?
That's what I'm understanding.
That's the motion, right. And we don't have the amount of what that impact would be?
I mean, I would have to go.
You'd have to run the numbers, okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
The reason I made the motion is because we have, we're at, we're at a juncture where if we don't know what's going on, one thing I know for sure, if you pay for services and you're not getting the different services, I have an issue with that. I think anybody will have an issue with that. That's the bottom line. And in good faith, we should go back to the table, and this doesn't affect anybody, just a moratorium until we figure these things out, because we're not, not everybody who's expert. But at least in good faith, we deserve that for the citizens. That's my motion.
My question for city attorney. Not levying the special tax, how is that separated at the time of levying the tax?
I don't, I don't know specifically that answer, but there's two portions of it. The levy part, that is, for on this, that you do have an obligation, the other one, I do think it would impact your budget negatively.
Definitely, oh, yeah.
Without, I can't, I'm not a finance, I don't know your numbers, but based on, I think that would definitely impact your budget negatively.
So I believe.
I don't know if you could afford it, that's the other, that's the, I think, practical reality on that portion.
My next question is, when you vote to put, would the phrase be moratorium on the special tax, or how would you phrase it? Not live, because I've seen some, and some call it moratorium on the special tax.
I think you'd probably still want to evaluate that, so it would be a delay, moratorium, more continuance, depending on what council's looking at.
And you have to put a number, a date on it, like for a year or indefinitely?
I don't know if we could give you a number for that. I mean, but I think you'd want to, if you're going to do, I think it'd be been short, I guess I think it's going to have a fiscal impact on, I mean, I don't know that answer, I can't speak to that. That's more a finance, but I think it would impact at least that portion, but ultimately it's the council.
I, I believe it will definitely have a fiscal impact, and I would definitely like to know the impact. Can you, can we run those numbers? Can we come back to the item at the end?
Well, if you want to, we can move the order of the agenda, you know, leave this item to the end, because I do understand, and, and, you know, that was something that, you know, members of the public or the Hearthstone residents brought up also, but it was also shared with us, the impacts, and, you know, to, you know, Council Moreno's and Tylenda's, you know, point, both of them have valid points, right? The fiscal impact, but then also, you know, showing some good faith to to the residents, but also we have a due diligence to be fiscally responsible. And, you know, at this point right now, we are at the juncture where we have to take a decision tonight, right? Whatever that might be. And hopefully something that is well-informed and well thought out fiscally and legally also. Because, you know, I understand also the language that is going to be used, where it's a moratorium, where it's, you know, a timeline, you know, attached to that, whether we're going to revisit that also. Because the city is not in the position to absorb any of those financial responsibilities right now.
Can we, this is.
So that's why, you know, if we can just move it to the end of the agenda and just do some, some numbers for us, and maybe Carlos, if somehow there could be some clarification on the language that could be used?
Yeah, I think it's, it's just whether or not, it's how long you want to hold that. I mean, that language, I think you could, whether it's a continuance, whether it's moratorium, it does the same effect practically, so whether it's, yeah, on that portion.
Can we have a special meeting on this before August the first? And get the numbers correct before August the first?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go with public comments.
Ben Horton?
Counsel persons, Ben Horton, longtime resident. Put it up in my mouth, huh? All right. Way back when I worked on this Hearthstone issue, in fact, the city used part of the money to do part of the interstructures that are there. I think that bond was meant to put the interstructures and roads, or should say the streets and everything, things like that. Now, one of the things I suggest, if you want to do your fact finding, you should go to the assessor and the tax collector to see what is written up, because that part goes with the land. So when you change title, that stays with the property. Now, if you're going to start changing certain things, and I concur with counsel person Tylenda, she's right. What we're going to be doing is creating another situation that's going to directly or indirectly affect the budget, because the money's already been collected and should be in a certain account, because that's meant for that particular area. Now, have we used the money for that area? I don't think so. I think the people concur on that part. Those bonds were meant to improve, to do the roads, I should say, the streets, the parks, they were promised. And way back when, when the developer went bankrupt, they had insurance that was supposed to cover this. Apparently, the company went bankrupt, and they took pennies on the dollar, which they shouldn't have done that. And I, I think I still have the records on that part. So my feeling is, you could put a moratorium time being, and maybe a proposal, but not to eliminate it or anything, until you get all your facts, talk to this county assessor, talk to the tax department, see what was written up at the time. And then also, I believe this is part of the property, it goes with the property, if you sell it, you sell that too. At one time, there was a way for the property owners to eliminate the tax, but we didn't take advantage of it. And I, I say it was the city council didn't take advantage of it. There was a way to eliminate that. And I think I still have the records on that. So it's up to the wisdom of the city council to take the appropriate action. I myself, I think I still have some of the records in my, in my portable hard drive. Now, they say they went out to the storehouse and pulled it out. Now, I suggest that the city start doing a better job on their record-keeping. Maybe put something in a hard drive so you can pull it up. This idea, I'm going to run to the storage deal, doesn't help these people any when they need to get satisfaction, get the information. Now, it's up to you how you want to move forward on it. But I would say, talk to the tax collector, talk to the assessor, start getting your facts, and the word that I'm going to use, and I think attorney can understand it, do your due diligence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian Salgado?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Christian Salgado, and I'm a resident of the, now I figured I was the Hearthstone neighborhood. I've been a property owner there for three years. I was previously renting. I would consider me and my family a young family that returned back to Callexico, who purchased a home. My grandparents have always lived on Fourth Street. My parents moved over here to the Victoria Estates, so to own a home in Callexico is really important to my family. But I very much come here today to kind of repeat the grievances of our neighborhood. My daughter has to go distances to go to a park, and there's a lot of young families in their neighborhood. My neighbor has two young children, my other neighbor has teenagers, but no park, no resources. Recently, there was a brief cleanup that happened, but I think maybe because residents started speaking up possibly. But to be more clear, what am I asking for? I'm asking for this issue to be resolved. I'd prefer it be resolved before November, when everyone has to go up for reelection. But if not, I would hope the residents here would continue this on, past the election cycle that happened for us. I also would like to push and be very clear, I want the removal of the special tax. Just owning this house for three years, I probably paid a little bit around lower six thousand dollars in these additional taxes. I did buy this home knowing this, but where are any new developments to live in the city of Callexico, to be a homeowner in the city of Callexico? And I really hope that the city does its job, legal as well as financing. I do look at this as a holistic way, but I do see my, the residents in my neighborhood bearing the burden. I did go back and I did do the history. It's really unfortunate that back in twenty seventeen, this was brought to the city council, and it wasn't resolved, and residents have to continue returning to address this issue. I hope that this council, and I do want to end with, thank you, Lisa, for bringing this out of private, you know, meetings and out to the public where public comment can happen. I hope council meetings continue that way on issues that are most concerning to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, you have a little bit more information, I don't, the numbers. And again, yeah, just my partner is of the bond attorney who was here on Monday, confirmed that, yeah, the facilities part, that you do have the obligation under the covenants. The second part, the services, he understood that that pays for this currently, it's already in your budget to pay for police and fire. So that's, so it's, I understand it's already included in your budget, I don't know the specifics of that, but the facility is the CFD, that's a part that, you know, I think we have, you do have a legal obligation to pay. The second part, it's, it's already, I understand, goes, the second part goes to fund police and fire, and that's already included as part of your budget. So not paying or delaying would potentially impact your budget, but I think the finance director could tell you the specific numbers on that.
Just to clarify, not paying would just mean, or not levying the tax would mean that we absorb the cost.
You'd have to figure somewhere else to pay the services portion, correct?
And just to go off of what you're saying, so the way I understand it is, when Hearthstone was planned and then came to fruition, the services levied on this subdivision, that's how they went and hired whatever police officers back then. So that's why every year, although it's thought that the, the funds have not been spent, technically, they have, because that's how you grow the budget, just to clarify. I think that's important, because that's something that I had to keep researching and like trying to understand. So that's, that's what we're considering, not facilities, but just services that have already been incorporated into the budget.
Jun Kim?
Okay, service portion, never been used any our regular budget. The service portion of the money they sent to the city of Callexico was sending the, with the payments, for the payments, because they're not reaching the payments of Bosque. The sub is what's called the, that's CFD bond is creating for facility. The sub is what's called the, that's, CFD bond is creating for facility infrastructure, which is for space, all the place, the street and infrastructure supposed to be done by the bond. That time, our city council approved, do the job without finishing the infrastructure. By the law, it's there, infrastructure, the bond supposedly finished by, the infrastructure's done, then they can build the house and sell the house. And city of Calexico's council waived it. At that time, was mayor was Mr. Peroni and Mr. Pacheco. So, anyway, the money, was called the, we failed, the city failed to oversee, to obligating the necessary, the regulation, then who get the backfire? Citizens. And now, city of Calexico council members said, oh, I wasn't there. And the city staff, oh, I wasn't there, we don't know. The fee of the, the service portion is never been using to, for the, our police or whatever is our internal general fund matters. They were sending, they were adding together, sending to payments, even that one was still debought. And when I was, 2016, I was separate, make sure to not to send it, no longer send it the service fee. Even if we keep doing it, our resident of the Hearthstone can see the through the city, because the city spent their money to send it to the bank. They're not supposed to be, they're supposed to be repair the maintenance, not only police, that's repair the street, and they didn't do it. We collecting the extra taxes on the Hearthstone, but we giving the services less than the rest of the cities. That's what we doing right now. And the proper way to find the service portion, we can cancel. City of Calexico can cancel, doesn't impacting our budget.
Thank you for your comments, thank you.
And then, okay, just minutes, seconds.
Yeah, thank you. I already allow you to speak more than that. Bye. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Javier Jimenez?
Good afternoon, council. Javier Jimenez, 1065 F Herrera Street. I've been living there since 2009, and I've been paying for these special taxes without seeing the benefit of it. You just mentioned that the city is going to have to eat up whatever you guys lose from canceling it. Why don't you rephrase that and say that you have to readjust your budget? I've been an IID employee for 33 years. About 13 years ago, I lost my pension. They changed it to 401. So that is something you have to start looking at. Get rid of call pairs for your pension employees, and start saving money there. I know it's hard, I went through it. At the end, after being with IID for 15 years, all they got me is $28,000 plus a 401A account. So it's time for you guys to revise your budget, and especially call pairs, or your pension plan, basically. Thank you.
Jose Vargas?
Good evening all. Jose Vargas, 1004 F Herrera Street. In any case, this seems to be so convoluted. There's been so much deception since inception of the CFD, you know, with the, starting with the approval of it, with no second public hearing, no letters to the residents of telling them what the attorney Kim was saying, that this, the money, the $50 million was not meant to finish all. How come they didn't say that in the beginning? I mean, I wouldn't have bought a home because of the situation if they would have explained. In any case, you, as a legislative body of the 2005-1 CFD, that translate, that you are the maximum authority of the CFD. If we, the residents, go before in a court of law, we don't have a leg to stand. We go against you, the bondholders. But if you just abate the CFD, which you have the power to do so, there shouldn't be no problems. You're the maximum authority of the CFD, and that was bestowed on you with the mellow rose. So, nobody would have a leg to stand in a court of law against you for abating the CFD, both special taxes, the facilities, CFD, and the service fee. They're both special. You only convoked it here, you call out only for the CFD, not the service fee on item number five, the consent agenda. So, just do away with both special taxes. You have the power to do so, and nobody can say nothing about it. They, it would not hurt, there was no, there's no risk of litigation from the bondholders, neither impairment of the credits, because you are the legislative body, we translate to the maximum authority to do whatever you want, and that is to remove the special taxes. And you can do it today. Shouldn't be a problem. Have faith, have faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Nuricumbo?
Good afternoon, Diana Nuricumbo, 1068 Villa Barranca. I don't, I don't want to accuse anyone individually, but I do have to say that it's a little bit responsible, that this has been brought back to the agenda, when the finance director cannot give you a number right now, when the city attorney cannot give you an answer right now. And you shouldn't be making any decisions that aren't informed and aren't backed up. So I'm going to help out the finance director a little bit, and I'll let you know, that 246 homes pay the same amount for these services we're talking about. And that's $691.70 multiplied by the 256 homes. We're talking about $169,986. And for a city, I know the city is, you know, not in its best financial state, but this is chump change for the city at this point, because we have been paying for this for 18 years, too long, without receiving the added services. We pay for police and fire with our 1% of property tax already. So this is why we're saying, you're double dipping on this. Now, if it's going to affect your budget, then, I'm sorry to say this, but all five of you council members up here should be here, because you have a little bit of knowledge and you have a little bit of creativity on how to deal with these types of situations. So you revisit, you know, your departments, or you revisit your investments, or how you're going to redirect the people's money, and you figure out where you can pull this money from. But what we're asking is to do something in good faith for us, because we've been waiting for too long. We want to know that you are taking this matter seriously, and that's all we're asking for tonight. We are not asking for you to remove the levy from the undeveloped properties. You know, the lots next door that belong to the developer, charge them the fees. You know, we're talking about the families that actually live there. Those are the people that we're looking out for. We're not looking out for the developer. We already asked you, you know, in the last, in the town hall meeting, if they're not paying their CFDs foreclosed, sell the property, have someone who's willing to invest in it, do something with it, use those funds, be creative, look for ways to help us with the situation. But don't repeat history and just charge us, keep continuing charging us the fees without even knowing what that fee is. So, you know, I just made, I just told you what we're asking for. $169, I'm sorry, $169,986. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jose Inojosa?
Good evening, Jose Inojosa, 1056 F Torres. On behalf of the Hearthstone community and the 246 homes, we feel bringing this item back two days after the town hall is, was not appropriate, and we also feel that we didn't have enough time to have everyone show up. We had around 40, 40 people show up on Monday. And let's clarify, so we have the special services tax, and we have the CFD tax. It's separate. What we're talking about right now, what we want your good faith action tonight is to remove the services portion, which does not affect any bond, any credit. On top of that, we are not making the payments. So I don't, this, this, what the attorney is saying and what everyone else that is giving you advice about credit rating, you're not making the payment on the bond. You're not even collecting enough to make the debt payment. What are you, what is this credit rating? You're not making the payment. So if today, if everyone today would pay that CFD, the city would be left like with $10 million debt. If everyone today got a loan and paid that CFD today, cash, the city would be left with $10 million debt. Then you would be looking at something else to, you know, to pay. So, tonight, we're talking about a good faith action from council to remove the services, the services portion of the tax. Not anything else, not the bond, not the actual CFD that is levied through the county treasurer's office. So if you look at the county treasurer's requisitions, you're going to see that we only collect around $400,000, which is not even enough for the debt payment. So, we, you don't have the documentation, it's not in the backup information. You don't have it, I don't have many of the information. The blind are leading the blind here. When are we going to keep on moving forward, just rubber stamping these type of situations? In our city, I don't, Mr. Mayor, I know you're not here for that. I know you're here for the people. I know you. So let's make things right, and let's have justice done to the Hearthstone community. And let's start tonight. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, well, I was going to bring that it was on page 183 of our budget book. It was a special service tax, which Ms. Nuricumbo mentioned, was $160,982 that it would go, the city would be responsible, that you would be taking.
So now, any additional comments, council?
I do have some questions. Thank you, staff, for that information. City manager, city attorney, during the town hall, a foreclosure process was discussed, and then future dates were alluded to. What is staff planning moving forward, given the situation? In terms of foreclosing on the other two properties, what is the timeline on that? If maybe Carlos, you can chime in on how long does a typical foreclosure process take?
You know, I don't have a timeline, but that's a direction. And we have a foreclosure team that's already been involved, starting looking at developed properties, getting some additional information to look at that. But I don't have that for you, but I can provide that to you later this week.
Okay.
And Ms. Fonseca has reached out to the floor, call your team this week to get that process going, pending getting documentation, so there is no timeline yet, as of yet, but I will provide one as soon as we get one and get better direction from Ms. Fonseca.
Okay.
Town hall, as you mentioned, when we would meet again, and like I said, I will continue talking to the governing board for Hearthstone, and keep these talks going, to set something up with a reasonable time to have their community present, as Mr. Inojosa was saying, to have a larger group present to voice their concern.
I would like another town hall for the last week of October, so that gives staff the October month and a little bit of time for another town hall. I want to know what portion of the process we're in for foreclosure, and, you know, dates and times, tentative.
What was the second part?
I want to know dates and times, tentatively, for foreclosure, like where we are at in the process, what has it been started by then, and, you know, what we anticipate, when we anticipate it will be completed.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table to, again...
It would be to pay the facilities portion, but not the special services portion.
But then, we were just talking about whether it was moratorium, whether it was timeline attached to that.
I want to amend, I will amend, up to a year?
So this year?
Up to a year from today.
Well, yeah, well, we're...
You wouldn't be levying it for fiscal year.
That's my motion.
And now, just going back to fiscal, or finance, excuse me, Sunday on this, I know it was said, I would like to know, before we move on with this, is there any monies that is collecting the service tax from the current, you know, monies that we get from the, this CFD? How much is that is going to service? Or do we get anything on that? From what is collected right now? Is it 100 and, okay. So with that, like, you know, like I said, you know, we're going to have to really do some due diligence and find some monies as a gesture, a good gesture. We'll go ahead and, I'll second that motion from Mr. Moreno, to, who's motion, and now we're going to go for a roll.
And just for the record, just to clarify how it's specifically labeled, it's a special tax rate for facilities, levying, assessing that, but not the special tax for services. Unless the service is not levied for the year. Correct.
Do you want him to remake the motion, or you're...
I just clarified that for the record, that's a motion, but just wanted to clarify the language.
You want to read it again?
It's to level the special tax for the, for the facilities, and not to levy the special tax for services, for the year, correct? For this year, correct?
Hey, Camilo Garcia?
Yes?
May I approach Ms. Javier Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo?
What is the motion?
Este, si le quieres decir que la, la moción es de este no cobrar el impuesto de este a CFD solamente para servicios. Por un año.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Taylinda?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we move on to item number six. Co-Boulevard between MLK Avenue and Bauker Road Rehabilitation Federal A Project Number STPL five one six six zero three five. Award bid proposal from Rove Engineering, Inc. in the amount of two million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred ninety, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Be authorized acting city manager to sign a construction agreement between the city of Callexico and Rove Engineering, Inc. in the amount of two million, two hundred, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars for Co-Boulevard between MLK Avenue and Bauker Road Rehabilitation Federal Art A Project Number STPL five one six eight zero three five. Staff report on this?
Good evening, mayor and council members. The city of Callexico received a grant from the Department of Transportation back in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to overlay Co-Boulevard between MLK Avenue and Bauker Road. The grant is for one point four million dollars with a local match of one point seven. We went ahead and brought the plans and specifications to council back in March twenty of twenty-four. We began advertising and on April thirtieth, we received three quotes. One from Rove Engineering, another one from Vance Corporation, and the third one from Hazard Construction. Rove Engineering was the lowest bidder and met all the qualifications. So I'm here before the council requesting three items. Item number one is to award the bid. Item number two is to authorize the city manager to sign the construction agreement. And then item number three is we have an ordinance twelve eighteen that allows us to ask council for a certain percentage of the construction agreement. So we can have change orders just in case we have any, while the project is going and we don't have to come back or delay the project some days to come to council to request authorization.
Any comments, questions from the council?
Yeah, yes, mayor. Follow me, is this, um, so this just include, just, it's only the road, right? Just the road?
It's only the street overlay, as well as there are some sections where we're going to put handicap ramps that are not ADA compliant.
Okay. Is that, what about the beach canal? That's, that's a.
The beach canal is the imperal irrigation district.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I, I just wanted to ask, you know, I know the change order just giving that amount. But I, and I know this is just to keep the, the project moving and I appreciate all the due diligence. But I just want to make sure that, you know, the council keeps, gets informed as, as this come up also. That's all I ask.
Okay.
And I know you, so, but I appreciate all the due diligence done on, on this. And I know that residents have been asking. And hopefully later on, we get into other conversations. I know that Supervisor Escobar was here the previous meeting and maybe we're routing traffic because it's heavily, heavily, you know, used by, you know, heavy transport. So, but again, that would be another conversation because I think the last time that this, you know, road was paved, you know, it was many years back, you know, so I don't even recall. But anyway, so, so we need to take care of our roadways. And I know we need to have traffic and we need to have commerce. But maybe exploring some of those options that, you know, against Supervisor Escobar was, was talking about, that would be worth also a conversation. Anyway, with that.
Yeah, I, I did, well, I attend the Imperial, you know, the Imperial County Transportation Commission TAC meeting, which is all the public works department and planning. And I did inform the county that we were ready to resurface if there was a possibility for them to do Bauker Road. And they told me that they do have funds, but it's not projected for this fiscal year. So we, you know, it's going to probably have to wait a year or two. But I, I did, I'm putting my word into the county to also have Bauker Road resurfaced as well.
And I will put in the world what I see, TC, so, so maybe two of us and all of us, you know, asking. But thank you. With that, I move for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Camilo Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pochen Javier Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Taylinda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven, authorized acting city manager to sign agreement of professional services between the city of Callexico and Nicholas Engineering, Inc. in the amount of a hundred four thousand, five hundred, nine hundred thirty-seven, eighty-two for the construction management of your, your technical and inspection services for Co-Boulevard between MLK Avenue and Bauker Road Rehabilitation. Federal project number STPL six one six eight zero three five.
Now that, now that you have approved the award, now it is time to select our consultant to do the construction management inspection services. So we went ahead and also did a request for proposal back in April. And on May twenty-second, we received three proposals. One from Dynamic Consulting Engineering, Fountain Head and Nicholas Engineering. We went ahead and reviewed them and we are recommending for council to award it to Nicholas Engineering to assist us during the construction process of Co-Boulevard.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council?
No, I don't.
Public comments? So with that, do I have a motion for approval?
Yes, I'll move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Mayor Camilo Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pochen Javier Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Taylinda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eight. Authorized acting city manager to sign agreement, agreement of professional services between the city of Callexico and Nicholas Engineer, Engineering, Inc. in the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars for engineering services for Enrique Camarena Memorial Library, Community Center and Police Department Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project. Your advocate?
Yes. Back in April seventeen, that there was some funding left over from the Essential Worker Program. And staff requested council to approve funding to resurface the three parking lots that you just mentioned. So what I did is I went ahead and did a task order and emailed it to our on-call engineering list and requested them to provide me a proposal for them to come and assess first the, the parking lots, then prepare the plans and specs so we can go out to bid. So we received three bids, I mean, I'm sorry, three proposals. One, again, from Nicholas Engineering, to, to, second from Kim Lee Horn and the third from Dynamic. We went ahead and reviewed them and staff is recommending to award the contract to Nicholas Engineering. And so they can prepare the plans and specs for the construction of the parking lots.
It's well overdue. Well overdue.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Just one comment, chief, that's your parking lot back there. Is that going to cover the, the, last time I was there, what, anyways, a couple of months ago, I think it's going to cover your whole parking lot, right?
The pothole, right?
Yeah, the pothole, it was a big.
It was kids and badges when we were.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
Yes, that pothole was caused during the construction phase for the fire station. So we need to get that repaired. It is a safety hazard.
Yeah, well, that's good, nice faces on that. Also, Victor Legaspi, you're going to get your life there also as well. So it's good, so.
Thank you. And with that, and I will add to the motion to approve and a party to celebrate the final resurface of these parking lots. Really, really need it. So I move for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Camilo?
Yes?
Mayor Pochen Javier Moreno? Councilmember Gloria Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Taylinda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we're moving to item number nine.
Can I make a comment? I want to, I want to commend Lily Follow Me for doing an out, outstanding job. I mean, she did these three items and she's that, she's that one-person team that, that just, I mean, she's good, she comes up here and he tries, she tries really hard and she does everything due diligence. I just want to commend you for your job. Well done, thank you, Lily.
Wait, hold, hold that. I think she might have to come up with the next item, you know, too.
So, so do I need to hold that one back?
Well, thank you. Much appreciated, appreciated. So item number nine, renovations to Callexico Fire Station Number Two. One, authorized acting city manager to issue purchase order to Airwave Communications in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-four, thirty-six dollars, thirty-six cents, excuse me, for the purchase of and installation of PA system, video doorbell and BHF pager antenna coax system for, system, system, excuse me, for Callexico Fire Station Number Two. We're still using coaxil cable. We don't have any, you know, technology that, that has to. No, just kidding.
Twenty-six thousand. And I, I think the last time Ms. Taylinda was an employee, she did a walkthrough, we did a paged test at that facility and we actually had a car speaker wired, mounted on the wall and we used it as our paging system.
They also had a mushroom growing out of the wall. I have photos.
So, so Airways Communication is a communication provider for the city of Callexico Fire Department. They've updated a lot of work here at Fire Station Number One. And now with this heart saver paging system that was, you know, initiated, pushing through with the association, getting the grant money and with the help of the city, providing funds for the installation. Fire Station Number Two needs to be upgraded as well. One of the big issues with the, the communication system was the antenna and the mast. It was leaning and that antenna wasn't, hadn't been properly grounded in the last thirty years. Luckily, it wasn't struck by lightning or, or somebody got hurt, but it wasn't, they've, once the building opened up and we ended up finding more issues and more issues, they found that, that it wasn't properly grounded. So Airways contacted me, we went through a communication list of what would needed to be done. And so they came back with the, pretty much doubled the quote from thirteen thousand to twenty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-four to redo the whole facilities, including that doorbell camera. Because most of the gentlemen are in the back part of the station. So we can have the same camera that is installed here at Station One.
Any questions, comments from the council?
I have a lot of questions. Anyone want to go before me?
Well, go ahead and then, you know, since you have a lot of questions, you might.
Answer some along the way, okay. So maybe this might need finance, city manager. Can you give us an update on how much has been spent or paid out to date on this project since it began?
So the total expenditure with the current change order, change order, which we actually got another one, like I mentioned in close, from, um, previous. It's going to be one point eight million, five hundred and seventeen thousand.
For the record, right?
With a balance of about thirteen thousand left.
Okay. Now, the grants that were alluded to for about six hundred and some thousand dollars initially for the CDBG CV funding, have they been, have they been reimbursed?
They have not. They recently reached out to us this week. They're, they're rejected, that's five hundred thousand, but it was rejected because it's going into a different portal with a new amended budget. And it's going to go to full review. So that's the only reason it was rejected, but it's still under review.
And so these are, in total, it's about one point one million dollars and change. What we've, we haven't gotten reimbursed a port, so the six hundred and some you submitted for reimbursement, it's still under, under review pending. And then the five hundred thousand was rejected, but it's going through a different process for consideration.
Correction, it was rejected, but in the system, we will be following a different process to add the additional funds to the contract. So they're going to review that process.
Okay.
So just to clarify, I know that we had a discussion and to make sure that we are very clear. It was rejected, rejected as it was submitted, submitted using that system that was in place at that time. Now they have a new system and we have to resubmit using the new system. That doesn't mean that it was rejected totally.
Correct.
You know, we are at risk of not getting those funds. So it's just the system that they're using.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
An updated system, basically.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, I, I still.
Okay, go ahead.
So beginning this project, for the record, the city was looking to spend six hundred and some thousand by October and then the additional five hundred thousand, which have not been awarded technically. But we're at, you said, one point? Eight million?
One point eight.
One point eight, okay. All right. So the, and that's, and the walls are still open, correct?
Correct. And we have a, a meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock for updates.
Okay. And this communication system, I would say would have been something foreseen, correct? Was that, were, were you included? Was the staff included?
Airways, when they did their initial walkthrough. And obviously you can see that the speakers are going to be replaced when they fully opened it up and saw that it wasn't properly grounded, that the mast was hanging, once they were stuck on, the wall was exposed. Then all these, you know, and then with the additional new paging system, heart tone system, that was an additional at a cost.
What, what I want to know, if you can clarify, if you know, the initial walkthrough with the whole group was done in January, correct? Before they were awarded anything, they came down, they did a walkthrough in January. Did Airwave do a walkthrough with them when they were doing their plans? Or they came and did the walkthrough after?
They were all there.
They were all there, okay.
And like I said, you could only see something from the outside and once that wall opened up and exposed other issues.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
I, I'd just like, you're done?
Yes.
I think, just, uh, because there's a lot of things being going on since last time we got an update, I think it, perhaps it's, it's, it would serve us well to know, maybe a, a written report to all of that you're alluding to, potentially even where the sources of funds coming from. Well, certainly in light of citizens, we're, we're spending that money. And I know we, we write the hiccup that they changed to, to the system and know we're going to get the funds. But I think also what mayor was saying, allude to that also in the written part, that we're going to get that funds. I think a full written report up to date is, will suffice.
What, one way we can maybe put that in writing, make report for the public and to hand out a report to see.
Sure, right.
The updating the process is for the town hall on current, on August twelfth.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's all happening.
No.
I, I do have another. What was the original budget for this?
I believe initially it started with five hundred for the roof. Five hundred thousand.
Well, and, 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 excuse my interruption, but this is what I said, I've been saying always, it's like a money pit, you can go on and go on, and I said it. And here we are. And so it's important that we are not only transparent, I think we're, we've been transparent. I think we tell people we're, we're actually, what's happening. Because I said, I always said, I'm no problem fixing that. The thing is, we foresee things is going to increase. So we need to have a budget for that. Otherwise, it's going to be forever. But a written report will certainly alleviate some of that.
At this point, now that everything has been exposed, has the construction group who's working on the project provided feedback on what work is going to be done entirely? Like what is the plan? Because I am under the understanding that they're going, it's as built.
No, they, they send biweekly reports. They just sent one out today, on this, this afternoon. And they showed the breakdown for next week. They would be working on certain areas, windows, doors, door frames. The following two weeks, they'll be working on another project and so on and so forth. And then tomorrow, I can give you a better update as to where the project is and hopefully to meet that August thirty-first deadline.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about the deadline because the funds have already been expended per the grants. I'm concerned about, you know, what's remainder, because change order after change order. We need that fire station, period, right? So I think that's why we're rolling with the punches. But we also need to know what, what is really going on. What, now that the walls are exposed, they should have an idea like, oh, you know what? We just got to do this and put the windows and we're done. How many more change orders? I, I'd like to know that. I want to know the plan moving forward.
And if we can have that on a, on a weekly base.
Yeah. And I try to add that on, I'll try to add on to the weekly summary for all staff and department heads as well. as well, and so you can get an update.
Thank you. So I know there has been a lot of information that has been shared about Fire Station Two from the beginning, from many months ago, and I think also finally the town hall is happening. So we just wanted to put this out there again, I know we mentioned it at the previous meeting, so next month, you know, the twelfth, we can just make sure that we put it out there, and make sure that we do a historical timeline, you know, from when this project started, where we are now, and how we're going to look like, and how this is going to look like, you know, when this is completed also, because this is something that, you know, the citizens have been asking, and also, not just the citizens, but, you know, all the stakeholders involved from day one. So anything that might be needed, you know, that will be the case, and that's what I'm expecting, that, you know, this information will be shared, that the public will be allowed to ask questions and participate, and somehow continue to get the updates. So I appreciate that also, I'm setting that up. I appreciate also that, you know, willingness from our colleagues at the school district, you know, in lending the facilities to have this town hall. So I'm looking forward to that, but thank you to everyone that has been involved with putting this together. So with that, move for approval. Do I have a second?
You second.
Roco.
Mayor Kamilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo. Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailinda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, committee mural project cycle eight. Item one, round mural project cycle eight for a total cost of up to twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Item two, within item ten, adopt project forms and guidelines, and authorize the acting city manager to execute agreements and/or any documentation pertaining to the project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're proposing, well, mural projects are coming back to the city, we're proposing mural cycle number eight, and we're proposing two locations, fixed locations. One would be the Camarena Memorial Library storage bin that is at the site of the library. The second one will be the public restrooms at Crummet Park. And the third one, it's optional, the artists can propose their own location. This program is open for artists over the age of eighteen who possess a social security number, they will be required to get a business license, submit a TUP application, and get a liability insurance so that they can install this art. We're proposing a stipend, different stipends, because there's different locations and location sizes. For Camarena Memorial Library, it would be five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, divided between artist fees and installation costs. The other one would be Crummet Park for seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And lastly, for the open location, it could be up to eight thousand, two hundred and thirty. It is strictly based on location size, and it will be proportionate to the other projects. Excuse me. The installation cost will be provided to the artists on a reimbursement basis, and they will be, upon signing the artist's agreement, they will be provided with a one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars out of that installation cost, that is to help them secure the liability insurance, the TUP fee, and also the business license, so it wouldn't come out of pocket for them, they would have the finances for that. And lastly, at the end of the, at the end of a project, they will get the artist's fee at the end. The artists will have three months to complete their projects after signing their agreements. And this project, if it's approved, it can be up to twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, which come out of the art in public places, and this is budgeted in this fiscal year as well. This item was also taken to the Community Services Commission in July tenth, and it was approved unanimously by the commission.
So that was my question, answer my question, as to the funding source in the arts in public places. And then also recently, we were at a meeting with one of the social service clubs, you know, the Rororit Club, where they are thinking also about working on a mural, you know, but this will be a mosaic type of, you know, material, right? So they're looking for partners to go into this project, right? Something that, again, it will have guidelines, it will have a theme, it will have, it will be one of many that they have in mind, right? So I know both, you know, Councilman Legaspi and I are members of that club, and again, I'm not pushing for this, so I'm trying to have this just as a discussion of adding, and I know that the chair of this commission is here also, but maybe considering the third option, maybe partner, maybe leveraging some of these resources to make something different, and I know that we have a lot of murals, but now using a different material, exploring different locations in our city. I think it could be something that we can start partnering. I know that, you know, the club is interested in contributing, San Diego State also has, you know, shown some interest amongst other, other, you know, potential partners in this project, so if we can just probably set aside, maybe we can have you or the chair, or both of you maybe attend, and have that conversation. I know that there will be some meetings happening in regards to this mural that, you know, we're thinking about, you know, maybe supporting and contributing to. So just as an additional information. Questions, comments?
Mario Conde will be reaching out to you.
There you go, there he is. There you go, Mario, take note.
Get the phone number.
He's taking notes already.
You were looking for money, so there might be some.
Also, Ms. Oranias right there, so get her also.
And in this option, just for you guys to know, in the forms that you will be approving, if you so choose to, artists can be also appealing to the community to install the mural. Again, they will still, the more people you have involved, of course, the liability insurance will go up, because it has to, it has to cover all the volunteers who are there, but it is an option, so there will be an lead artist, and it can come up from a Rororit Club, it can come up from, the application can come from any agency that wants to do this, it will be only one application, that one artist will get that fee. So maybe if more funds are needed, then that's the potential of the other organization to probably also help fund, that will be option number three. The other ones already have a specific location, if you want to go by these guidelines.
I do have a question. How are the artists chosen? So what's the submittal process? What's the review, and how are they?
So they will submit their application and the rendering of the proposed art to the Recreation Department, then we have a ad hoc committee meeting that pertains to the arts section. We will potentially invite also a muralist to be part of this panel, and they will, they will rate, they will read all the information provided on the application, they will rate that art, and then submit a recommendation to the commission, and then the commission will discuss and provide a recommendation to the city council. At the end, it will be at the city council's discretion to select the artist, and it's up to three, up to three projects.
Awesome. It typically are artists from all over the valley that come and apply, or is it local artists from Calixco?
So this will be our first here at the Recreation Department. Before then, no, we had people from Hoteville, we had several people not here. I believe, I don't think we had any from San Diego, I think they were all from the Imperial Valley previously, but we're talking about maybe twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen being the last cycle that we ran.
Oh, okay, so this is.
The very first in.
In a while.
Twenty, since twenty seventeen, maybe twenty eighteen.
Awesome, already, thank you.
So with that, another motion? For approval?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roco.
Mayor Kamilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo. Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailinda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eleven, appointment by Councilmember Thailinda to the Library Board of Trustees.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Elena Huey Mendez to the Library Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez, you know, for volunteer, volunteering.
Is she here?
No.
No, okay. Just let her know that she was, she will stay. Thank you. Now we're going to move to informational items, which is number twelve, receive and file Community Services Commission minutes for regular meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-four. So do we need a motion for that, or just receiving?
Just to receive and file, there's no motion.
So that's it? So now we move on to future agenda items. Do I have any future agenda items?
I do. It's quite a few, I don't know if you want to, get ready? Yeah, ready? Okay. All right. So I'd like for all consulting contracts awarded to the Halt Group to be brought before the council for review, discussion, action, and, you know, what's, with all the background, what's being worked on. I'd also like to ask for a discussion informational item regarding the homeless encampment removal process, and potentially creating a task force for anything related to the transient concerns with the police department, and with that informational item, please include fiscal impact. Then I'd also like to have a discussion slash informational item, review of Highway one eleven and ninety-eight slash Caesar Chavez border crossing congestion, what are the city's options for the two thousand seventeen traffic study, what has, what has transpired since then with the city ICTC and Caltrans, and what are any pending items for that area, that, that item, moving forward or changing the route? What are our options? I'd also like to see before the council, or anything if staff has to do it, a request for RFP for legal services. I'd also like to see before the council an ordinance for food truck operations, discussion only, see what's been worked on in the last few years. I'd also like to see a potential discussion item with fiscal impact for the creation of a full-time salaried position for a city attorney. And I'd like all this, I know timing is short, but at least by the last meeting in September of this year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thailinda, I know that's a lengthy request of items, but I appreciate that, but at least we were listening, okay? So we have coin on a lot of things, so let's prioritize, and I know everything is really important, so appreciate that. Anybody else?
I do. We're having a meeting on, we're going black on August, right? Right, we're going black, but, so, right, so if we do have, like, maybe special meetings, maybe you could throw in a couple of updates. I know we wanted to have an update on the new leader, because there hasn't been complaints, not complaint, but concern by the merchants. I think we kind of gave an update, chief, or we collected, and, you know, also, since we're going to do a report on the, on the fire department, we should have a timeline on it. When are we going to finally get that thing done? That's pretty much it. Thank you.
No, the city manager has a lot on his table, so, next time.
Appreciate that. One, I'm just going to ask for something that definitely at the next meeting, I would like to get something, and I know that, you know, Mayor Potem Moreno sits on that board on LAFCO. I want to know about, you know, the status of Heffernan, you know, what's transpired today, what's going to be the impact, you know, for our community? I know there are a lot of questions as to what's going to happen with the tax, what's going to happen with the services, what's going to happen with the healthcare, you know, in our community. So that, you know, and again, I don't want to pull rank, but I think it's something that, it's happening right now, the community is participating, the community needs to know, and it's not that it's been hidden, but we need to make sure that we understand, and I think there's a lot of going on throughout our valley when it comes to that. So healthcare, you know, it's one component that it's really important to make sure that we have it available, to make sure that it's in place, you know, because we can be talking about everything else, but without healthcare, literally, we don't survive. So I wanted to get a status update as to what's happened today, you know, what's in the future, and how do we move forward, and, you know, we can have it as a presentation. I would really appreciate it, that's my only item. Thank you.
You know, I do have one, and I forgot, the cannabis tax, how are we doing with that? If you can just give us a report, and where is that money going to?
I also want to say that all the items that I asked for, the community has been asking for as well.
Correct.
And they deserve to know. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, just to piggyback real quick on your, on your request, I would suggest, as representative of the city, as leader here, as mayor, you should show up to the, to the Imperial County, Imperial Valley Healthcare District meeting, and maybe also request that from them, because I sit on LAFCO as a chair, I won't make the presentation, but also, you know, going there, asking the same question, maybe they can show up somebody, bring somebody over here also, to enlighten us more on what's the future in Calixco as far as the healthcare district.
Yeah, and we have been showing up, whether it's in person or via Zoom, we have been participating, but I think, you know, I'm referencing today's decision, you know, dissolving, you know, the district, you know, what's the impact? So, and you're right, you know, I know that they did it previously, and LAFCO did it today, so I just want to make sure that we go back to that. With that, I have a, do I have a motion for, to adjourn?
Yeah, so move.
Second, and, what, I second, so, we'll adjourn at seven fifty-six PM, which is a regular.